Shall we get the show on the road?
Sure.
All right. I will hit my gavel. Call to order the regular city commission meeting of May the 11th, 2021. May we stand for the pledge of allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag
of the United States of America
and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation under God.
Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. The next item is roll call. Amy?
So when I call roll, if you'll just give the location where you're at, city and state, not necessarily address. Commissioner Budnick?
Present in Pleasant Ridge, Michigan.
Commissioner Perry?
Present in Pleasant Ridge, Michigan.
Commissioner Scott?
Present and in Pleasant Ridge, Michigan.
Commissioner Wall?
Present in Pleasant Ridge, Michigan.
Mayor Metzger?
Present in Pleasant Ridge, Michigan. Here we are. No traveling this time. Okay, the first item on the agenda is public discussion items not on the agenda. If you have something to bring forward, please give your name and address. And tell us what's on your mind. Okay. That was a good one. All right. Next item on the agenda is governmental reports. And as we now do a regular, we will have Chief Robinson, who is joining us, start off.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome. So not much to report. For anybody in Pleasant Ridge was able to enjoy the vaccination clinic, I'm so glad we were able to extend it to your community, too. Right now, the anybody who did get their first dose will be going back to the Kulik Center, get their second dose on the 26th or 27th. If any additional clinics will be held there, I'll make sure I share that through, so you can put it out through your whole community right now. Right now, there's not set for a follow up, but if you guys are following it, Pfizer probably as early as this Thursday could be approved down to 12 year olds. And of course, anytime that they expand age ranges, sometimes they look for additional clinics. And right now, they're realizing the clinics within communities are more popular and people really like those over the big mass clinics. Probably just feel more accessible and comfortable. So I will keep you guys updated if anything changes with that, other than that. Thank you, and hopefully some of your community was able to enjoy the benefit of that.
Thanks very much. Are there any questions or comments? Anybody visit the Kulik Center?
It's great, though.
Yeah, no, I'm really pleased that 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 happened. I think so Oakland County is up to, was it 65% of adults? I think, and now we're starting the 12 to 15 year olds. I'm hoping, I'm hoping that one thing that I pushed the county exec and the staff, they did a great job on the whole COVID cases by zip code, so that you could really start to see geographically how things played out. And you could start targeting issues. I've asked for the same thing, why we can't do that on vaccines. If you're going to target clinics and everything else, it helps to know where the vaccination numbers are low. The health department is playing around with the map. I saw an example. They haven't quite mastered it, I don't think, to put up on on the website, but that should be coming soon. It's getting a little late in the process. But it would still be very helpful for everybody involved to see, at least by zip code, vaccination rates and where where extra efforts should be placed. So that will be coming, I hope. Next, I think we have Chief Nowak.
I believe that I believe that Chief Nowak is out on a call right now. Oh, no, he's back.
Look at him, he's back. He wouldn't, he wouldn't miss a meeting. But he's muted. You're muted.
There we go. How about now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, duty called. I only have a couple, couple items. With the warm weather, we're, and the grass is growing with the spring rains and all that and everything. And so we're seeing a lot more tall grass and weeds. Know that officers are out there enforcing that as well as the code enforcement officers. So if you get a warning notice or a door hanger on your door or anything like that. I know we all have busy schedules and stuff, but try to keep your grass down to a minimum. The ordinance, I believe, is no higher than eight inches, which is pretty lenient. So any weeds or grass that are taller than eight inches will get a warning notice. So everybody can keep on that because we're noticing not a lot of houses, but several. It's, I received some info from the Office of Highway Safety Planning. This just came out. It's regarding traffic crashes, calendar year, and they've compared year 2021 to 2020. And so compared to those two years, 2021 fatalities are up 35%. Serious injuries are up 27% and total crashes are up 4%. And truck bus crashes are up 7%. So some pretty significant numbers and increase of of those accidents, those type accidents. We see a lot more distracted drivers. We know that last month, remember, was distracted driving month, and we gave tips about that. So I think, not that our residents aren't careful, but I think we need to be extra careful when we're out there driving and not assuming that others are as careful as we need to be. So, you know, light changes to green, it's a good idea to wait maybe a second or two. It makes sure traffic comes to a stop before you proceed. That's how one of our police cars was hit a year or two ago here at Sylvan and Woodward. A woman ran a red light and crashed into our car and totaled one of our police cars. So it's good to wait, never be in a hurry, speed. Also, is a dangerous factor. So I always try to leave early. Sometimes you don't, but that way it gives you plenty of time, so you're not in a rush. So other than those two things with the crashes and the ordinance thing, I don't really have anything else.
Anybody have any comments or questions for the chief? Either chief.
Can I just add something? Sorry, I just thought about it. Keep talking, let me think about it. If you guys don't know, Ferndale did launch their patio zones last, on the sixth, so it was that Thursday. On the first weekend was very calm and uneventful, but just so you're aware, if you're going through the area, if you're not familiar with the pet, what the patio zones are, there's east and a west, the one on each side of Woodward. It allows people to essentially walk into a business like the Rust Belt or Bobcat Bonnies and buy a clogged beverage and then walk out onto the street and drink it on the sidewalk, walking down the sidewalk. It's special cups, it's only licensed to specific vendors, but so you may see an increased number of people out on the sidewalks moving around. It's been very calm. PD will be monitoring that, but just so you're aware, that's something extra if you want to get out. But also just be aware, it may increase foot traffic and stuff around those intersections and when we're talking about the crashes and stuff. So. And hopefully we don't have any, because it's been great so far. We've only had our first weekend, it was very calm and very low key. So that's how, hopefully, it'd just be a way for businesses to increase business a little bit, to help them out, but and keep people safe, so they don't have to be crowded together. But we're just hoping it stays a very positive thing.
Well, I know, I know pedestrian injuries are up as well, so it might be, hopefully, everybody will be paying attention and not drinking and looking at their phone at the same time. So. Yeah, they try to walk down the street. It's good, it's good to remember that, so. Anything else? Okay, thank you, thank you both. Moving on to city commission liaison reports, and we'll start out with Commissioner Perry for planning DDA.
Thank you, Mayor. The planning commission and DDA met on April 26th. The planning commission had a lengthy discussion about the potential impact of marijuana businesses and agreed the city should be prepared to look at possible zoning ordinances. It's possible that the city may have to confront a marijuana business regulation soon due to a citizen initiated ballot initiative. And in this case, the planning commission will be called on to consider zoning ordinances and amendments. The DDA considered their and recommended the 2021, 2022 year DDA budget. And that is part of the combined city budgets and that the city manager will be introducing tonight. And then also, Tom Troyer has stepped down from the commission. We just want to thank him very much for his service. And Tom Wilkinson has been appointed to the new chairperson for the planning commission and DDA. And we want to thank this other Tom for his service, too. So, thank you.
Well done, Tom.
Yay. So the next scheduled meeting will be on Monday, July 26th at 7:00 PM. So, thank you.
Excellent. Okay, any questions or comments for Ann? Okay, moving on, Commissioner Scott, historical commission.
Thanks, Mayor. We had our last meeting on May 5th, and most of our conversation is around the garden tour that we're hosting on September 11th. We have about six houses signed up right now. We'd love to have more houses sign up, so feel free to reach out to Lauren Howard or me or City Hall. If you're interested in featuring your garden on the tour, could be the front yard or the backyard, any place that you might find in your yard to be a sanctuary, just someplace that you like to go to, that you've, that you've set up just to be a place to relax and you think others would enjoy. So feel free to reach out if you'd be interested in participating. We're also opening the museum for one-on-one visits. If you've recently moved to town and are interested to see what others might have done to your house in the past, it's likely that there are photographs or other artifacts that are in the file for your address in our historical museum next to City Hall. And it's a great place to go just to see what what's been done before and to get a glimpse at what's happened. You might even want to drop a picture of your own into your file so that people in future years have something to refer to. It's, it's a cool thing. And that's about all I've got for this evening. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Anything for Brett? Okay. Next is Commissioner Wall with the recreation commission.
Hi, how you doing? So we have, okay, Pleasant Ridge Safety Day, Saturday, June 20, 26th, from 9:00 to 11:00 at the community center parking lot. 70 multi-sport helmets will be given out to the first 70 kids. It's pretty cool. Registered for safety day, rain or rain date is Saturday, August 7th. Fire safety with Ferndale Fire Department, police safety with police, car seat safety, bike and helmet safety, railroad safety, internet safety, boater safety, water safety and emergency ridiness. So they'll be covering all bases, so it'll be great for the kids to learn a lot and help keep them safe. Daddy Daughter Dance, Friday, June 4th, and the pool deck, a luau, totally cute, 6:00 PM, $10 per person. You can sign up online. Mother and Son Olympics, Tuesday, June 1st, at 6:00 PM at the community center, $10 per person. Another cute idea.
Amy, Amy's signing up right now, I can see.
Oh, is the torch going off? Oh, okay, and also to the pool, I'm going to segue into the pool. Make sure and get your pool tags, because that's going to be critical when we open the pool this year. You will not be able to get in unless you have a pool tag. So you can start getting them, you know, Monday through now, Monday through Thursday, the May 3rd through 21st during open hours at the rec center. Bring picture ID with your Pleasant Ridge address and your pool pass to renew for returning residents. New residents will be issued a new pass to expedite the line. Pool tags will not be renewed during pool time slots, obviously, so you have to do that before you show up at the pool. $10 replacement per pool pass if you're not brand new. Ice cream social, this is cool. Somebody made the plan words, ice cream and social distance. Oh, COVID humor. Wednesday, July 14th, at three, excuse me, 6:30 at Gainesboro Park. It's free to attend, you just must have to pre-register. They get a lot of good ice cream, and it's a fun event if you've never been. Pleasant Ridge Leaders and Training Program. The 2021 LIT program allows for teen population to develop strong leadership skills and develop taking initiative. They spend the summer making new friends, gaining work experience and having fun. LITs will receive training and on-the-job feedback, support and evaluation. The summer LIT opportunities include seventh, you have to be current seventh graders, 2020, 21 year. And, let's see, oh, and up, sorry. You know, you can be older than that. And summer camp, special events, outdoor pool and front desk. There's also a nominal fee for the LIT program to help offset some of the costs incurred with the program. Fee covers the training. The PR swim team begins to practice outside, a little chilly right now, outside on Monday, May 17th. We're looking forward to another fun, exciting summer of swimming. Very excited that that's happening again this year. If you see a piranha around town, be sure to give them a high five for the hard work and dedication. Pool time slots can be booked 10 minutes, up to 10 minutes before and up to a week in advance, beginning Friday, May 21st for the pool. Don't forget to practice signing up beginning tomorrow, so you can take a look at the software. It's the same software that we're using to book at the wellness center. That's a wrap, that's all I got.
Excellent report. Are there any questions for Amanda?
Yeah, Mayor, I had one. It was Amanda's talk of the myriad safety type things reminded me of the police event we were talking about, and I just wanted to throw it out there. I know the commissioners and Jim have been in on this and as well as Chief Nowak. So I just wanted, that just kind of prompted that, and I hope we can figure out a date, and I don't know if that's safe, one of those dates would work that Amanda mentioned regarding the the safety trainings and such. So just wanted to touch base on that.
Did you want to explain a little bit more for people who are not familiar with what we've been talking about?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. We, we've, from what my understanding from the other commissioners is that in the past, we've held a meet and greet with the police officers. So now we have a few new officers on board. And with warm weather soon to be here, we thought it would be a great time to introduce these officers to the public and give, give our community a chance to get out and safely meet our police force. I think that it would help really build community, help build trust, and it would just be a great event to to offer to to folks that'd be interested, so.
And just to piggyback on what you were saying, we've done in the past, like a coffee and donuts or coffee with the cops, cute situation like that. But immediately, if you want to meet some of our police force, the safety event, our police will be there, too. So that would be a good immediate offer to come and see what, you know, what they're all about. We really value our police force and happy that we have them with us, so it's a great way to meet them.
And could you give us the date again on the safety event, please?
Yeah, let me pull up my, I think.
Sorry, I didn't mean that.
Saturday, the 26th, from 9:00 to 11:00.
Okay, great, great. Okay. Wonderful, okay. Next, we have Commissioner Budnick, who's going to tell us about Ferndale Public Schools and the Huntington Woods Library.
Thank you, Mayor. Regarding Ferndale Public Schools, a couple items of notes. It's kind of unbelievable, I was listening in and the year is wrapping up. It's kind of crazy to think that we've eked our way through this bizarre year. And as of right now, prom is still on, so there's hope for those juniors and seniors. So as of right now, that's the way it looks. And something that I thought was pretty cool is one of the student liaisons, Jaslyn Coles, I believe she goes to UHS. She mentioned introducing a financial literacy course into the curriculum. And she spoke of the need for kids to understand basic, you know, how to balance your finances and how to understand cash flow in, cash flow out, and and really manage your personal finances. And I thought that was such a simple, but, you know, great idea. So kudos to Jaslyn and everyone on the call, including the superintendent, we're like, that is just, that's great. So that was cool. And as of, as of now, and this is from the end of May meeting, the plan is to go back to school in person, full for 21, 22 in the fall, with a virtual option. So that is, of course, with an asterisk, we'll see what happens, but that is the plan as of now, and and we'll see what happens there. And on to the library report. And I can't thank Mary and Stacy enough for making this easy for me. The Huntington Woods Library has a jam packed May. They didn't forget about Cinco de Mayo or Mother's Day, and they offered three great kids events to prove it. Family trivia returns Sunday, May 16th. On May 19th, join a scholarly Zoom discussion with Wendy Evans titled, How Could the Holocaust Happen?, which explores how art was used by the Third Reich to further their atrocious ideologies and military objectives. On Wednesday, May 26th, from 12:30 to 2:30, the Friends of the Huntington Woods Library are sponsoring a senior artistic salon, a festive in-person gathering held at the south end of the library parking lot. In recognition of Older Persons Month, this event is a celebration of seniors through art and music, featuring professional artists and musicians, Charles Green, Tom Picard, John Casey and F.R. Gagliano. Space is limited, so please sign up now. And to sign up for any of these awesome events, go to the Huntington Woods Library page. That's HuntingtonWoodsLib.org or give them a buzz at 248-543-9720. And that is it, Mayor.
Excellent, thanks, thanks. Are there any questions for Commissioner Budnick? No, I see, I see no's. All right, thanks, thanks to everybody. We will move on to the next item, and it's the proclamation declaring the first Friday in June as National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Marsha Ruff was nice enough to forward this and 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 make sure that we were aware and put it on our agenda. And I will read from the proclamation, and then I will ask Marsha to make any comments that she would like to make. So this is the 2021 proclamation declaring the first Friday in June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. This proclamation declares the first Friday in June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the city of Pleasant Ridge, to honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence and declare that we as a country must do more to reduce gun violence. Whereas every day more than 100 Americans are killed by gun violence alongside more than 230 who are shot and wounded. And on average, there are more than 13,000 gun homicides every year. And whereas Americans are 25 times more likely to die by gun homicide than people in other high-income developed countries. And whereas Michigan has on average 12,000 and 1,200 gun deaths per year, a rate of 12.1 deaths per thousand population. Whereas in January 2013, Hadia Pendleton was tragically shot and killed at age 15. And on June 4th, 2021, to recognize the 24th birthday of Hadia Pendleton, born June 2nd, 1997, people across the United States will recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Day and wear orange to tribute, in tribute to Hadia Pendleton and other victims of gun violence and the loved ones of those victims. And whereas the idea was inspired by a group of Hadia's friends who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange. They chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods. And orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 4th, the first Friday in June in 2021, to help raise awareness about gun violence. And whereas by wearing orange on June 4th, 2021, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. And whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children safe. Now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Kurt Metzger of the city of Pleasant Ridge declares the first Friday in June, June 4th, 2021, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. I encourage all citizens to support their local community's efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives. With that, I will ask Marsha to make any comments that she would like to make.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just, thank you Pleasant Ridge for considering supporting this declaration. It is, you know, I mean, the numbers are horrific enough as Mayor Metzger read through, but you know, there's costs even beyond that. You know, our children go through school every year practicing for lockdowns and pre-composing the texts that they'll send their parents. You know, parents worry about friend, their children getting hurt at friends' houses where guns aren't secured. You know, our police never know in the most minor encounter how heavily armed the person is that they're that they're coming up against. It's just, we can do better. And so I appreciate Pleasant Ridge offering to support just a day where we can really reflect on what we can do to do better by each other. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marsha.
Yeah, thank you very much. I, I second your comments, third your comments, fourth your comments. It's very critical. I don't know when it's ever going to end. So I'm going to ask if there is a motion to approve the declaration of June the 4th, 2021 as National Gun Violence Awareness Day.
Mayor, I move the proclamation declaring that the first Friday of June as National Gun Violence Awareness Day be approved.
Is there support? Is there any discussion? Right, Amy, can we take a vote, please?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Motion carries, the proclamation has been approved. Thanks again, Marsha.
Thank you, Marsha. Thanks, Commissioner.
The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. We have about five items I just want to mention, I'm not going to read again, but that there is a part of that is the proclamation declaring Saturday, May 15th, 2021 as Police Memorial Day and May 9th to May 15th, 2021 as Police Week. So I just want to make sure that we get that, and then I will ask if there is a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Your Honor, I move the consent agenda be approved.
Is there support?
Support.
Is there any, any discussion? Okay, Amy, once again, please.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Consent agenda is approved. All right, moving on. The next item is establishing public hearings on Tuesday, June 8th, 2021 at 7:30 PM to solicit public comments on the following. The proposed fiscal year 2021, 2022 millage rates and the proposed fiscal year 2021, 22 combined city budgets. With this, I will turn it over to Jim.
Thank you, Mayor. Give me a second to get the presentation.
Okay.
Okay. Tonight, we're calling for a public hearing for June, at which time the commission can adopt the millage rates and fiscal year 22 budget. As normal, at this point, we'll give an overview of what the proposed millage rates are, some budgeting trends. We do do a three-year budget, so in the budget document itself, you'll see that there's a current year fiscal 20, or I'm sorry, fiscal year 22 budget. That is what's adopted, but we present projections for fiscal years 23 and 24 for planning purposes. Those budgets are not adopted at this time. The headline millage rates in 2020, the local Pleasant Ridge total millage rate was 21.4525 mils. And the proposed 2021 millage rate, which would take effect July 1, 2021, is 21.3110 mils. This has been reduced by the headly rollback. And here you see what all of the components of those millage rates are. One thing to point out here is that the police pension millage passed in 2018 by the voters, which has been a great help as we start to address our underfunded pension, that phased in at 0.35 mils per year. This year, it is fully phased in. What you'll notice though is it's only phasing in at about 0.25 mils. That's because it has been. mils. That's because it has been reduced by Headley over the last four years. So this is now the maximum levy. And this will continue to be reduced by Headley in the coming years, but we are now fully phased in with the police pension millage. When we passed that millage, the reason it phased in at point three five mils per year was that was an amount that would about offset what our annual Headley rollback number was. So you can see that our millage rate in twenty eighteen nineteen was twenty one point four three eight eight mils, and now we're at twenty one point three one one mils. So our millage rate has stayed very consistent over the last four years as that police pension millage has phased in. I guess lessening, you know, any kind of shock or increase that residents would see from that coming online. When you look at historic total city millage rate trends, we have been, again, fairly consistent. The millages passed by the voters in November of twenty fourteen in response to the budget, I won't call it a crisis, but stresses that we had out of the two thousand and eight recession. Increased that millage rate, but then it's been reduced by Headley a little bit and fairly steady since then. We've talked so far about local millage rates. That's just what you pay to the city of Pleasant Ridge, and that's only about forty seven percent of the taxes that you pay. So when you or your bank pays your property tax bill, forty seven percent of that goes to the city. And the other fifty three percent goes to all of the other taxing jurisdictions. The largest outside one being the Ferndale School District. The county is about ten percent, a little bit less. The intermediate school district is at seven percent. And then the remaining seven percent is some distributed to smart community colleges. D I A, the Detroit Zoo, County Parks, here on County Metro Parks. Looking regionally, when you look at local millage rates, this just shows all of the cities and in Oakland County and where we fall with our local millage rate. And we are right there. Lathar Village and Huntington Woods are two very similar cities to us, being smaller, primarily residential cities. It just, you know, there's a certain amount of money it takes to just run and operate a city, and you have to raise that funding. And with our similar cities, you see we're very close to them in local millage rates. Back to Pleasant Ridge, historical trends where our general fund revenue source comes from over the last. I used to say thirty years. We're getting closer to forty years here now. And this is inflation adjusted into twenty twenty one dollars. But again, you see, it's about three million dollars a year pretty consistently, maybe a little bit more on an inflation adjusted basis. Really with that dip from the two thousand and eight recession being very notable and what that did to local finances. And again, those millages that were voted by the approved by the voters in twenty fourteen. All they did really was restore us to our historical funding level so that we could continue to deliver services in a way that we have for almost forty years now. When you look at the percentage of general fund revenue by source, one of the things that's notable here is this large blue area at the bottom is taxes and special assessments, so local property tax primarily. And how that's gone from somewhere between fifty and sixty percent now to seventy five percent. A large part of that is because this orange area is revenue sharing, which used to be over twenty percent of local revenue, now is a lot closer to five percent. As the state has continued to disinvest in local communities, we've been forced to basically raise taxes to just fill the hole that's been left by state government. And this is highlighted here with the state shared revenue trend. The orange line is inflation adjusted state shared revenue in twenty twenty one dollars. The blue line is nominal dollars. So in nineteen eighty five, in actual, actual dollars, we got about two hundred and seventy five thousand dollars from the state in revenue sharing. Which is more than we're going to get this year. And, you know, you could buy a house or a car for a lot less money in nineteen eighty five than you could today. So that two hundred and seventy five thousand dollars was equivalent to around six hundred and thirty thousand dollars of today's money. And when we talk about things like having to replace our lead service lines and water main infrastructure, this this essentially three hundred and fifty thousand dollar annual disinvestment from state revenue sharing would go a long way towards helping do things like replace lead service lines. But as it stands, that's gone and I always just like to point out where where some of the work has been placed by the state now. We look at property value trends, the orange line is assessed property value and the blue line is taxable property value. Because of Prop A, which was passed in the early nineties. Taxable value can only increase at the rate of inflation, which means there's always a gap between the market value of your house and the taxable value of your house. This graph shows what those trends are over time and the impact that the two thousand and eight recession had on both of those. When we inflation adjust this, and this is just taxable property values. You see that the taxable property value in twenty twenty one dollars peaked in two thousand and eight, and then it dropped for the following six years. And then it really, in inflation adjusted terms, only recovered to two thousand and eight levels by two thousand and nineteen. So that's where a lot of the last decade has been working around that. When we look at how the city runs, the total revenue that Pleasant Ridge collects per person compared to all the other Oakland County communities. Again, here we are right next to Huntington Woods, always a very good peer community comparison. But, you know, we're we're on a little bit of the higher side, but still clustered pretty well in the two to three thousand range where most cities fall. Bloomfield Hills, something else. When you look at expenses per person, it's the same general story. We're clustered here at the kind of upper middle area. Some other notable things, police spending per capita. We spend around four hundred dollars per person on police spending. Two things of note, one of those being as a smaller community, a very, very, very large percentage of our police budget is personnel. Just being able to put cops on the road twenty four seven creates a baseline number of police that we have to have. Really, six is the minimum number of full time equivalents and seven is a better one for scheduling and working around vacations and overtime. Just to be able to cover the road twenty four seven. And when you, when you look at the number of police per capita or the number of police officers per resident, we have a higher number of of police officers per resident than most other communities. So our police spending per person who lives in Pleasant Ridge is a little bit higher than most communities, but again, that's largely staffing. So, you know, whenever anyone talks about defunding the police in Pleasant Ridge, my response. All of those things that people talk about defunding in other police departments, we don't have here. If you're talking about defunding the police in Pleasant Ridge, then my question is, which hours of the day would you like there to be no police officers? When you look at fire spending per capita, we're kind of at the lower end here because contracting with Ferndale is a good way for us to provide cost effective fire services. Fire is something that you don't need ninety nine percent of the time, but that one percent of the time you really need it. So it's a beneficial relationship we have with Ferndale, I believe, because we provide a baseline level of funding that they can count on for their operations. But we generally don't generate a lot of calls for them, so. When you combine, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I just wanted, since you had talked about Huntington Woods in in earlier comparisons, could you explain why Huntington Woods is zero Huntington Woods and several other communities are zeroed out for both fire and police spending?
Absolutely. So that was leading into this, the next.
Oh, good. Well, see, I knew you had that. I figured you had it covered.
Perfect segue, though. The the reason that there's zeros here is because this is for, this is for communities that have a fire department. This slide shows communities that have a police department. These communities here that are zeroed are public safety, where they're public safety officers, so they're both police and fire officers. They're cross trained. And they do both. So this slide here is public safety spending per capita. The communities with the orange dots are public safety communities. The blue dots. And then us, then the yellow dot. The blue dots, this is where we added their police and their fire costs to get the total public safety spending per capita. So what this shows is that the the benefit of public safety is that you can deliver services at a somewhat lower cost. But, you know, I won't, I won't get into any of the counter arguments against why you wouldn't want to have a public safety department. It's, you know, that's a whole nother discussion. It's really not on the menu right now, but from a cost perspective, it can be cost effective. For us, Huntington Woods is public safety. They don't really save much versus what we spend for our public services. So again, looking at a peer community that is public safety, you know, they're just from this one data point, and we always look to Huntington Woods when benchmarking anything. It doesn't really look like public safety is unnecessarily a cost effective way for us to reduce costs. And so that's, that's really the point of this is, you know, some of the larger departments, Berkeley, Farmington, Nova, yeah, Novi, Oak Park, you know, can see some savings, but they're also larger communities, and it's easier for a larger community to find cost savings if they want to. Because so much of our cost is driven by personnel.
Thank you. That's, that's great.
So what do we really value in Pleasant Ridge? Well, here it is, recreation. Our pool and our robust recreation programming and offerings, we, and Huntington Woods, again, are very similar, have much higher spending per capita on parks and recreation. And, you know, I think that's part, one of the, one of the things that that helps promote that sense of community we have in Pleasant Ridge that's so valuable here. So I'm not offering this is a bad thing, just to point out, you know, where your priorities lie when we budget. And then you could, you know, you can talk about all the other things that we do, sewer, water and sewer maintenance, all those other costs. And present graphs for those because we're all basically the same on those. There's really nothing notable to present. So looking forward, starting in fiscal year twenty two, if you're able to attend the water infrastructure town hall meeting, a couple of weeks ago, we talked extensively about this. If you weren't able to attend that, then we're looking at a project over the next twenty to thirty years to replace essentially all of our water infrastructure. The state has mandated that we have to replace at public cost all lead service lines. And that service line is the the pipe that runs from the water main under the street into your house to your meter that delivers water into the house. That's the only place that we have led in the public or the distribution system. Some residents may have lead piping inside of their house. That is not the city's concern, and we are not mandated to replace private interior lead plumbing. But the distribution pipes that go from the main of the house, we are required by the state to replace those. Our current annual water fund expenses are one point two five million. The new lead service line and water main infrastructure costs are going to be about eight hundred thousand dollars a year to do this project. That's a thirty six percent, that's driving a thirty six percent utility rate increase. For anyone that wasn't able to attend the town hall meeting on the water infrastructure project, all those materials are available on the website. Go to the homepage and on the quick links menu, there's a link for water infrastructure information. A video of the town hall meeting is available, the PowerPoint presentation, if you want to flip through it more quickly, is available, and it's got a lot of detail on what the project is and how we plan on doing it over the coming decades. But to give a sense of of really the scale of this project, this is our current water fund expenses on the left, broken down by category. And the the large majority of our water fund is paying for stormwater treatment, sewage treatment, and then buying wholesale water to resell to the residents. And then the remainder of the categories are fairly small. You see what the new cost that's coming in just for annual cost for lead service line and water main replacement is going to do. And these two brackets are the same size. So basically, the new lead service line water main replacement is equivalent to what we pay every year for stormwater, sewage, and wholesale water. Could we pay for this out of the infrastructure millage? I think, you know, many of us know that we have a two and a half mil infrastructure millage. Well, a lot of that infrastructure millage is paying off bonds that we use to forward ourselves money to finish the road reconstruction project. We have about a hundred and fifty to a hundred thousand dollars annually of available infrastructure millage revenue. So that goes part of the way, somewhat of the way, towards the new cost for lead service line water main replacement. We do intend on using some of that infrastructure millage revenue on an annual basis to supplement and contribute to the water main projects. But we also have roads to maintain. We have to spend money maintaining our roads every year to keep them in good shape so that they last a good long time. So this is just, again, give give an idea of the scale of the issue. So could we cut expenses? Well, what if we cut all of our recreation, closed the pool, closed Four Ridge, didn't do any recreation programming? We didn't cut the parks, cut the grass in the parks, do any public works, didn't plant any flowers. If we stopped all street maintenance and stopped maintaining our sewers, if we did all of those things, then we could pay for the lead service line and water main replacement. But I don't think that's a Pleasant Ridge we want to live in. If we cut all of our police, we could pay for the lead service line and water main replacement, then we'd have no police. Even if we said, hey, what if, what if we eliminate our police department and contract with someone else? Even contracting with someone else, which I don't think we want to do. There would be a significant cost to that because obviously it's not a free thing. So this is again, just to highlight the scale of this lead service line and water main replacement project and what we're looking at. We'll talk more about water rates in the next item when we have the resolution before the city commission to adopt the fiscal year twenty two utility bill rates. I have a little more information. Not quite as much as we've shown here, so don't worry, it's not going to be too extensive or long. But with that, at the end of my presentation, the requested action is for the city commission to consider setting the public hearing for the June eight meeting on the millage rates and the combined city budget. All of these are also available in the city commission packet on the website for any resident who wants to review these in advance of June eight. Happy to answer your question.
Very informative, Jim. You know, I love your charts. I I hate looking at that revenue sharing though. Gee whiz, it's amazing. It really is amazing how that from down to five percent. Sad, sad. Are there any questions from the commission before I ask for a motion?
Mayor, I, you know, there's, there's so many stuff, things. Jim, you know what, but thank you. The budget is, you make it such a digestible document. And, you know, the way you sat down and went through it with the city commission made it, you know, even even more digestible. So thank you very much. There's one quick thing on the, it's the like public works, I think, the contract. Like that one was like way very low last year and then higher, like sort of more of a bump than normal this year. Is that sort of due to some of the COVID actions like section, was it? Hold on. Eight, ten? Like one oh one, four hundred, eight, ten?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, that one was one last year when we were doing our budget was right beginning of COVID, there was so much uncertainty. You know, we were on our, our, basically our shutdown at that point. When we were trying to do our budget. So we were forecasting for worst case last year. We were looking at big property value declines potentially, and we baked all of that in just so that we would be prepared for, you know, if the worst came to pass. Fortunately, it didn't. I mean, Pleasant Ridge was. We had a better year than normal in terms of property values last year. So it was quite the opposite as it ended up. So we were very fortunate that way. I think what you're seeing is that the public works contract is one of the places last year where we had cut our budget anticipating and trying to just balance things as we planned on lowered revenues. And so, you know, we've spent a hundred and six thousand as of May fourth, but this is one of those budget lines that is very, 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 very backloaded in our fiscal year. Because a lot of this is mulch in the parks and planting flowers and spring cleanup and, you know, all of those things is are a big driver of expenses in our public works contract line. Briar Lars is very busy in May and June around the city, getting everything buttoned up and planted and looking nice. So we will see a lot of expenses coming in here soon. It'll get us up closer to our historic level of a hundred and eighty to two hundred thousand for expenses here. And in fiscal year twenty, we had a hundred and ninety three thousand dollars of expenses in this lineup. So we expect that to be back, you know, that's why we're budgeting two hundred thousand for fiscal year twenty two for this line, actually historic patterns.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right, hearing none. I'm going to ask, is there a motion to establish the public hearings? All right. Hearing none, I'm going to ask, is there a motion to establish the public hearings?
Your honor, I move that a public hearing be established for Tuesday, June 8th, 2021 at 7:30 PM to solicit public comments on the proposed fiscal year 2021 through 2022 millage rates and the proposed fiscal year 2021 through 2022 combined city budgets.
Is there support?
Support.
Support.
Oh, sorry, too slow there, Amanda. Okay, motions made and support. May we have the vote, Amy?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Wall?
Yeah.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Motion carries. We'll see you in June with public hearings. The next item on the agenda is the 2021 to 2022 utility bill rates. Jim, you're back.
All right. Rates are adopted by resolution of the city commission. For fiscal year 22, the proposed rates are ready to serve charge of $82.50. Well, a combined water and sewer usage rate of 106 dollars and 50 cents. Or I'm sorry, per thousand cubic feet used, um, 1,000 cubic feet is about 7,500 gallons. And our average water user uses about 7.8, um, units of water per year. Uh, the garbage pickup fee of $23.75 per bill and the, um, equivalent residential unit stormwater runoff fee of $50.35 per, uh, ERU. Again, uh, the water infrastructure project information is available in the quick links on you on the website at www.capleasantridge.org for all kinds of background information about our water infrastructure project. When we do our, uh, our water rates, we do use the three-year budget. We do a water rate model that considers expenses projected in the, um, upcoming fiscal year and then the following two fiscal years, so we can smooth out any kind of rate impacts. Um, and so our, our water rate does fully incorporate the projected capital improvement costs for the water infrastructure project. Um, that's a 25 million dollar project over 25 to 30 years. The key thing is that, um, we, we do not expect any further rate increases like we're seeing this year. Um, we're, we're ripping off the Band-Aid, jumping into the pool, um, shaving our head because we're losing our hair. We're doing all of those things right now this year, um, and hopefully we won't have to do any more of this in the future. This year, our utility rate inputs, wholesale water costs went up 3.2%. Um, sewage and stormwater treatment are basically a wash. Sewage treatment went down 3.8%. There's a formula that, um, GLEWA, uh, Great Lakes Water Authority uses, uh, based on, on dry day sewage flows and out of that Pleasant Ridge, our rates went down 3.8%. But our stormwater treatment costs went up 3.9%. Um, so that's a wash and then our garbage pickup cost, uh, increased by about 2%. So the consumer rate increase this year is about 35.7% for the average water user. Pretty much all residents are going to see a 35 to 36% increase in their utility bill costs this year. That's why the ready to serve charge is increasing, um, at, at the level that it was because we modeled out how to keep this rate increase at a percentage basis, um, as equal as possible for all residents. One of the things we've talked about, uh, is a way of paying for the water, um, infrastructure project would be to do a property tax millage. There's a couple, there's a couple good reasons I think the city would want to consider, the city commission would want to consider putting this on the ballot for November to have the residents vote. A property tax millage goes on your, again, taxes, it, it doesn't go on your utility bill. Um, a three and a half mil property tax millage would allow utility rates to roll back to 2020 levels. Uh, the millage would increase your total annual property tax plus utility bill cost by six to seven percent for all residents. So again, it's a very equal six to seven percent increase for all residents over what you're paying now. And again, that cost is based on your annual property tax plus your, your, your utility bill. So we modeled out what every household has historically used for water, uh, what their assessed property value was and how the millage, uh, would impact that bottom line out of pocket cost for all households. And one of the reasons why this is a more compelling, I think, and safe option is that one of the things that other communities who have adopted these water rate increases already to do lead service line and infrastructure projects is you can run into a, a rate death spiral where you raise the water rate and we're going up 35%. But that just incentivizes people to use less water. So then you don't bring in as much revenue as you need into the public system because we have to do these infrastructure projects. So you have to raise the rate further, which further, uh, squashes water usage and you can just end up in a bad situation. Um, doing this on a property tax, you know, it's a, it's a flat, it's not a flat bill, but it's a ad valorem tax. And your water usage, the water rates can go back down and people can continue using waters they have in the past without any, any kind of fear of a rate death spiral. So, um, that's something that, um, if the city commission is interested, we would bring to you for June to consider some language, um, for a, a ballot question in November. And then we would, uh, let the residents decide basically how you want to pay for this, uh, because we again are being mandated to do this project by the state. So we have to do it somehow. We have to pay for it somehow. Um, and I, I think the choice would then be up to the residents. Um, so that's all I have on the water rates. I'd be happy to answer any, uh, questions that the commission or anyone else has.
Uh, Mr. Mayor? Um, can I, uh, Jim, do you know, so did you say, I'm sorry, you would start bringing millage language to us in June?
Sorry, I was muted. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Uh, yes, Commissioner Perry, the deadline for us to approve ballot language to have it on the November ballot would be our July meeting.
Okay.
And just to make sure that all of our i's are dotted and t's are crossed, my preference would be is if we're going to do that, to do that in June. Just in case something comes up we need to fix in July when, you know, when we send the language to the state for approval or, you know, whatever may be.
Wow, it's already next month. Um, so there is, okay, you had, you, you said that we were, um, I forget if it came from the county or if it came from the state, what was it? 250,000 dollars from the federal stimulus?
Um, yeah, that's the, um, the ARP funding we're anticipated to get, I believe somewhere between 250 and 300,000 dollars. So, um, the universe is, the universe is funny sometimes because the state with all of its, I don't know, whatever, is also requiring all water suppliers to do a detailed materials inventory. And they're doing this based on a sampling. So because we have 1,100 water customers, we have to do 290 samples to get to a statistically valid sample. The city of Detroit has to do 310 to get to the same statistical validity. So that's going to cost us around 300,000 dollars.
Oh, my gosh. No.
You know, the universe giveth and the universe takes.
Wow.
So in a way, in a way, it's fortunate, you know, that, that, uh, manna from heaven and then we can use it to pay for the thing that's being.
Yeah. How, did you say we have to do?
Uh, I don't remember the number offhand, but it's somewhere around 290.
290 something like that.
So we have to go and dig holes in 290 residents' front yard.
Oh.
To, uh, to dig down at the stop box to look at what the material of the service line is. Even though, you know, we know we're going to replace all of our water mains and, and really honestly, we could just figure out at that point when we dig up the water main, who's got lead service lines and replace them at that point for almost no additional cost.
Did we figure that out from the, um, meter replacement?
No, the, the, how many, um, I, I guess, let me ask what the question is. Did we figure out how many we needed to do?
Or who has lead service lines?
So we are, we are collecting data points from the meter replacement project. We're, we're noting what everyone's service line material is inside of the house. We also have the historic records cards from when the water lines were installed. Um, so that noted what the material that they installed was back in 1931 or 47 or 29, whatever the case was. So we have those two records right now. That leads us to believe that we're at about 60% lead service line. You know, we don't know what the exact number is, but we'll be a lot closer to knowing what the exact number is soon.
Thank you.
I know in Ferndale, uh, I see Tom has a, Tom Wilkinson, uh, Mr. Mayor has a public comment, but I know in Ferndale, they're debating about just giving money back to residents from the federal stimulus and if only we had enough, we could even talk about that, but no.
Hey, Jim, I think I saw, uh, the mayor left, so he's probably signing back in.
Okay.
I think he dropped out.
Uh, in the meantime, then while we make sure he's okay, Tom, did you want to get something to say?
Yeah, just, and I think this has been addressed before.
Oh, I, I'm sorry. Tom, about. Tom Wilkinson, please.
Yeah, Tom Wilkinson, um, 130 Maplefield, uh, here in Pleasant Ridge. Is there any talk of maybe any future stimulus money in some of these upcoming infrastructure bills that might provide some relief? I know we can't count on it. We have to, uh, move ahead as if we're not getting it, but is there any thought that that might happen?
We hope so. And, and like you say, we're hopeful and, uh, we will absolutely adjust our plans and our funding needs if, if some of that money comes through.
Yeah.
Uh, but you know, there's so much that we don't know, you know, at, at this point, it hasn't made it through the legislation, legislative process at all. They talk about lead service line replacement. We don't know what that's going to actually cover or what, you know, they'll offer per lead service line. And, uh, a, a big, we talked extensively about this in the water infrastructure town hall, but a big, a big part of our, um, uh, cost is actually replacing all of our water mains, which I'm sure that the federal government will not be paying for that. So we're going to have, you know, yes. We are, we're ready, um, and hopeful that we'll have some outside help that we can reduce some of our costs that, uh, we have to charge back to the residents, um, but we just don't know yet.
Okay, thanks.
I don't see Kurt on the meeting yet.
Wellness Jack?
Yeah.
Here he is.
Uh. We're all reaching for our phones.
I'm so sorry, I'm back. Technology.
Concerned.
I'm sorry. I had, uh, the iPad was losing power. My, my, uh, router went out, so I'm back. Sorry. What did I miss?
A good question from, uh, Tom Wilkinson about federal funding possibilities.
Ah, okay. Got it. Am I supposed to?
So I, we're at the point now, I don't know if there's any further, uh, questions.
Any further questions before we ask for a motion? Okay, um, Jim, just one, one question and I may have missed that. Have we given you direction to prepare the ballot language?
Um, not specifically, yeah.
Do we need to?
Uh, I don't need specific direction.
You're going to be, you're going to be doing it.
Yeah, I mean, based on our discussion so far, I think we'll be bringing that to you in June.
Okay, good, good. I just wanted to make sure. Okay. Um, if there are no other questions now that I'm back and I'm sorry again, um, is, is there a motion to adopt?
Your honor, your honor, I move that the resolution regarding the 2021, 2022 utility bill rates be adopted as recommended.
Is there support?
I support.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right, Amy, may we take a vote, please?
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Motion carries. All right. All right, um, the next item is the 2021 community pool supplemental rules. Jim, I'm giving it back to you.
Sure. Um, and I'm, I'm very glad to see that a lot of our interested residents from last month aren't here now and we're actually lost in the rules, so.
Right.
Onward we go.
You just never know.
Never know. Uh, so we have supplemental pool rules. In your packet, we have our standard rules, uh, those all still apply, um, unless they are, uh, replaced or superseded by these temporary supplemental rules for 2021, uh, while we operate a pool during COVID times. Uh, we are reacting to external rules. The state of Michigan has public health orders. Uh, the most recent is the May 6, 2021 gathering and face mask order. So this was a new order that has been, uh, handed down um, in between the last time we talked about this in April and now, um, and that did change, uh, one specific, um, thing that we had to have a supplemental rule for. Um, and there are also maybe county health department orders. They haven't had any specific yet, but they, they can, uh, and those will impact how we operate. So when we talk about supplemental rules, uh, these are the things that those rules address. Capacity at the pool, time blocks, how you register for time blocks, uh, key tags, guest policy, um, and the mask wearing policy, food policy, locker rooms, uh, locker room policy, the lost and found and pavilion rental now. Obviously some of these are quite small matters and others are fairly, um, notable matters. Some of these, we have the ability to create our own local policy around. Others are, we don't. Others we have to do based on state orders. So the first thing is capacity. Um, a lot of our supplemental pool rules for this year are flowing out of the fact that we're limited to 50% capacity um, right now by the state. So that translates to 66 swimmers, um, that we can allow into the pool for time block. Uh, when we talk about time blocks, uh, one of the ways is we were trying to figure out how to equitably, uh, run the pool and we looked at how pool operators who were open last year handled it. Uh, when you have fewer available slots for people to come swim, um, and presumably the same demand for swimming, uh, it's going to be, uh, scarce supply to, we think, to, uh, be able to use the pool. So the best way to handle this is to set time blocks and pre-register for them so that residents know in advance, they have certainty about whether and when they can swim. And so the proposed schedule is from Sunday through Friday. Uh, we have three time blocks per day from 1:00 to 3:00 PM and then from 3:30 to 5:30 PM and then from 6:00 to 8:00. That will allow 198 swimmers in each day. And the half an hour in between time blocks is to allow pool staff to check the pool chemistry in the pool, to clean the deck, to do any, any necessary cleaning and also, um, for, for crowd control to just give us a chance to move the expiring time blocks swimmers out and get the new swimmers in, um, in an organized way. And also so that nobody feels like they're losing time. Um, you know, if you, if you didn't have a time block in between the people coming in, it would create some, probably some stress and angst. If it was 3:40 or 3:45 and your time block was supposed to start at 3:30, um, we'd rather be able to, to have that um, transition time in between, um, so that people can feel calm and comfortable that they're going to get their full two hours of swimming. Um, on Saturdays, our busiest day, uh, we have four time blocks where we can accommodate 264 per day. Now, one thing to note, and actually this, uh, should be until June, I have the wrong date here. June 17th, uh, the pool opens on May 28th, but from Monday to Thursday until June 17th, um, there's one 6:00 to 9:00 PM sweat, uh, swim session. Um, a couple of reasons. One is that the, uh, swim team, uh, needs to practice, but mostly this is because a lot of our lifeguards are still in school uh, at this point, and we can't, we can't open the pool at 1:00 if our lifeguards are in chemistry classes at that time. So, um, that will be, uh, something to be aware of as we dip our toes into the pool season.
Ah.
Cool humor.
Uh, this is just a little more detail on the tentative, I guess, May-June pool schedule. We'll firm this up after, uh, the city commission finalizes some of these policies tonight. But this is what staff is proposing and what staff would recommend, uh, for the time slots. Um, you will see that on Fridays, we have two time slots available. Again, we, we run into the, the staff availability because, you know, kids are still in school on Fridays. But we know that there's going to be some demand to swim on Fridays, so we will have two time blocks from 4:00 to 6:00 and then 6:30 to, uh, 8:00. Uh, or maybe 8:30 depending. We're not sure yet. Um, but then the rest of the, these two weeks is 6:00 to 9:00 PM. And then the weekend schedule is as normal as it will be throughout the year. And then you can see on June 21st, or on June, uh, 18th, we pick up the normal Friday schedule and then that continues through our normal weekday schedule, um, on, through the rest of the summer. We talked about the schedule. When we talk about the schedule, this is something that staff feels pretty confident and strongly about that two hours is the right amount of time. We think it strikes the best balance of the amount of time you have to swim when you're at the pool with the number of daily slots. If we start increasing this to two and a half or three hours, we can move fewer people into the pool each day, and it creates more scarcity for those slots to be able to swim. If you start doing 90-minute time blocks, it's a pretty short amount of time to be at the pool. You increase the number you can have each day, but it's, it may not be enough time while you're there to enjoy it. So this is something that the city commission, we certainly would like your feedback. And we would, we would ask that you confirm the proposed schedule, but if you have different thoughts, we will certainly do whatever it is you direct us to. Now, one thing I will add is as we go through these items, I, I think it'll probably be best if I just run through all of them. And then at the end, I have a summary of the major decision points that the city commission has. In your packet, the supplemental pool rules draft had some green text blocks where we also present some of the discussion and options around these, these specific policies. So I will take, I think, any questions the commission has on each item. So does anyone have any, any thoughts or discussion on time block length at this time or shall I move on?
Yeah, Jim, it's Chris. I, my question around this is just wondering when the staff would entertain or understand if it's working or not, or just kind of touch base to say, hey, this is good. This is not in, in touch base to evaluate where it is and see if it's working.
Um, yeah, the mayor had emailed about a couple, with a couple of thoughts earlier, and we had gone back and forth a little bit on this. My thought is the Fourth of July. And the reason for that is Fourth of July is about two weeks after we start the full schedule, starting at 1:00 every day during the week. You know, before that, kids are in school, families have, you know, stuff going on. So I think two weeks on the full regular normal schedule that will be in place for the rest of the year takes us to the Fourth of July. And I think that's at the point where we'll feel good about, you know, being able to say some things with confidence about what's working, what's not, where we're seeing demand, where we're not, you know, where we might have flexibility to change rules. But I think that's where we're at. Shawnee, did you have any thing else or you? That encapsulate everything?
No, I was thinking that'd probably be a great timeframe to let, let us get into that pretty, you know, deep dive into that schedule. Let everybody, because we still have about 14 lifeguards that have applied and are working to get certified and will certainly be by like early June, so that way we can get them into the rotation. So by early, early to mid-June at the latest, everybody will be, you know, will be fully staffed. So that's a, that, that's a really good time is July 4th. And we'll, and we'll know, you know, how busy it is and, you know, because we'll still have water aerobics going, summer day camp, you know, they can't count as part of the general public, so we'll have them be going after swim team, but before the general public and stuff. So lots of tweaking, as you can tell by the calendar that Jim put up there. Lots of hoops to jump through, trying to make sure that we can get everything in and make sure that we have enough staff to cover all those available hours that are, are needed from 7:00 AM to 8:30 PM on most days. It's a lot of staff hours to cover with a majority of a staff that's 15 years old. So.
Jim, can I make a comment too? So, so with the, so I think, I personally feel like July 4th is a great touch base. But I wanted to say, for some reason, if things did, like if the state changed their rules on capacity or something, we certainly are able to duck and weave quickly with something like that. I just want to acknowledge that.
Yeah, that's a really easy thing to say, but like you say, if they went up from, you know, 50% to 75, we can easily change that from
Right.
To stay 82 people or whatever, I don't know what the number would be off the top of my head, but we could change that. But, you know, whether it's like, you know, the, the two hours is not, is it's too long or not long enough? You know, we would be able to know that probably not until like the Fourth of July, I would say. But, you know, the adding or subtracting of people, that's, yeah, that's a really easy thing to, to do.
Okay, thanks.
And, and I know we're gonna, you're gonna give us our list, but I just want to put in, I, I think the two hour to start makes a lot of sense because we're talking about people, that way, people, even if they're a little bit late to show up for their opening time and they're a little slow getting themselves ready to leave. Two hours provides enough time, I think, and doesn't, you know, can help to, to keep all of that, you know, everybody kind of coalescing at one time. Gives enough people relaxation and everything else, and then you still get your half an hour between. I, the two hour makes much more sense than certainly within longer, but I think an hour and a half is much too short.
Yeah, Kurt, we also did a survey too that went all the way from California to Florida, North Dakota. Two hours was a really popular time block that's, most aquatic supervisors said was, you know, the most optimal time that worked. You know, they started here and ended up landed at the like two hour mark. And those were people that were, you know, open last summer, you know, so now they're, you know, their second summer and so they've actually gone through the whole.
Good, okay.
They have, yep.
Yeah, thank, that makes sense too, Jim. I, I, I think that makes sense trying to ushering people in and out, giving that buffer. That explaining that does make a lot of sense. And but my last question for this part is, I'm just wondering, Shawnee and Greg, what types of data you are going to collect to be able to pivot if need be? And what are you going to be looking for to make that decision if you want to shorten length and whatever it could be surrounding the pool?
Yeah, you know, as part of the data that we have to collect for Oakland County, we do know every hour how many people are in the pool, so we'll have all of that good data, not just from the sportsman, from the software that we have, but just from the reports that we collect from, from Oakland County. We'll know how many people per hour are in the pool. You know, the temperature, we'll have all of that stuff. So we'll be able to, be able to report back at any given time, like the most popular hours of the day, you know, is four on a Saturday. Is that too many? That might be too many. Maybe, you know, just three might be enough. Or maybe, maybe it's a warmer summer than everybody's expecting, and maybe we'll need the four to be able to get 264 people in, which would be easy enough to just go ahead and, you know, add that fourth time block in too. Like maybe on a Sunday, maybe not necessarily during the week, because we have so many other things going on, but maybe on a Sunday, we could do that too. But from the, from the record collecting that we've had from 2019, the numbers that we have projected for 2021, we seem to think that we can cover all of our bases and every, everybody's swimming needs. We think we can fully cover that with this proposed schedule. And if not, we're ready to go back, you know, it's, it's relatively easy to, to do on, on the sportsman. It's, it's pretty easy to fix, you know, with some advance notice, you know, we may have to put out, you know, a plea to the public like, hey, next week it's changing. We weren't able to get enough people in, so good news, we're going to four time slots instead of three because that many more people or residents are swimming this summer, which is great news. That many more people are healthy and, you know. So we could say, you know, starting in a week, we're going to go to that because we, everything is like a week based out. So we'll want to make sure we honor everybody that signed up a week in advance, their time slots. And then moving forward, we would be able to reschedule those time slots. So I think it'll be a numbers game.
Thank you for that context. And one follow-up. Would, would we be able to also, let's say, and I don't, obviously don't know the answer to this, time will tell. What if the time blocks are just a ton of time and we are able to get people in and out and cleaned in a shorter period? Would we be able to consider giving some of that time back to the residents? And I know that we'll have to look at empirical data and see how it goes, but is that something we would consider? 30 minutes just seems like a lot.
Oh, the 30 minutes in between, ah, ah, yeah, I'm not, yeah, we, we can reevaluate that for sure. I, I'm not sure if you know, but you know, there's lots of information that we have to collect for Oakland County. So the chemicals and stuff, we have to, to read those every couple of hours. So that's a great time to do that, but that often pulls staff away from the front desk. Well, there's, we can't do that this summer, like no front, no head guards can be pulled away. So, because they're going to be having to, you know, check temperatures, making sure everybody signed in, making sure they have their key tags. So during that 30 minutes, that's going to be time to, you know, change pumps, which we have to do one or two or three times a day right now with all these little things that are falling, these little seed things that are falling. There's, you know, ducks that we have to clean up with. Yeah. But, but we all know that, like you said, time will, time will tell, but right now, we're, 30 minutes might not even be enough, Chris, to be honest. This pool is very time consuming. There's lots of things that need to be done. It takes an hour just to rearrange chairs, you know? So to ensure everybody's health and safety, 30 minutes is a, is a good starting point for sure.
Thank you for the context. I, I was just asking it to be looked at as part of the contingency plan.
Yep, nope, absolutely.
Okay, Jim, I think we can go back to you, right? Registration, this is just the process. There's more information. I don't think there's a lot to discuss. We, we have a good registration process. This is the same one we've been using for the wellness center, and it's worked very well. You can register online. There's, again, on the website in that quick links menu, there will be a pool. There's a wellness center registration right now. There'll be a pool one. Or you can go to pleasantridge activity reg, reg, I don't know, dot com. And you can, residents can register for one time block per day. Registrations will open up one week in advance, so, you know, when you know that you want to go Saturday at 1:00, or the week before, it's Saturday at 1:01 PM, you can go on and reserve your spot for the following week. But you can register at any time up until about 10 minutes before the time block starts. And then even after the time block starts, you, you'll still be able to go to the pool. So if it's Thursday night and you decide, you know what, it's a nice night, let's see if we can go, we haven't registered for anything. All you have to do is call up to the community center and pool staff can reserve space for you, even after a block has started if slots are available. So those impromptu trips to the pool are still very much a possibility this year, as long as space is available. It's really just a matter of spending 30 seconds or a minute registering through the online system or making a phone call to make sure that the space is available and to reserve your spot for that block and then head on up and enjoy the pool. Each person attending, that's adults, children, toddlers, has to be registered and also has to have those pool tags that you'll have to get in advance. All persons attending the pool again have to have their tags. You have to attain those at the community center before you arrive to the pool to swim. Because we know that we're moving people in and out, we won't have time to hold the lineup to get your new tags for you like we have in previous years. So you do need picture ID or birth certificate for all people to verify resident status. The mask policy, this is one place where that state order has loosened things a little bit, a May 6 order. The order that was in effect in April, when we were talking about this at the city commission meeting in April, was requiring that everyone was going to have to wear a mask on the pool deck when they weren't in the pool. That has been amended, and now we will not have to require masks on the pool deck.
This is great.
Right. And so, I mean, this is, you know, this is what we've been saying all along. Things are going to change. They're going to evolve, and as they evolve, we'll respond to them quickly and, you know, what the most reasonable way possible. So we are happy to not have to require and enforce and police a mask policy on the pool deck. Now you just can't have to wear a mask when you're indoors at the check-in desk or when using the locker room. I think we're all pretty used to that by now. So that's a good thing. So hopefully, as more people get vaccinated and we hit some of those other thresholds and targets that the governor has, more of these policies and rules can go away. This year for the locker rooms, we're not going to have, as of now, we're not going to make the lockers for the changing room or showers available this year. We don't want people lingering inside in the locker room. In particular, you know, if it's a hot and steamy environment that can help increase transmission, we think. So please arrive in your swimsuit. And of course, the toilets and sinks will be available for you while you're at the pool and the locker rooms. We are not planning on maintaining a lost and found pile this year at the pool. Anything left at the pool will be discarded at the end of each day, so please take care and keep track of your stuff. The food policy, we will not be opening the concession stand. That takes a lot of pre-planning and with all the uncertainty, we're just, we're not taking that on this year. Currently by state order, we can't meet the requirements to allow food consumption on the pool deck. The May 6 state order has specific requirements for food consumption. You have to have a certain distancing for tables where people are sitting and for consuming food, and it's not something that we have the staff to enforce realistically. So we can't ensure compliance with this state order, so at this point, staff is recommending that we do not allow food on the pool deck. Residents can bring water bottles, of course. That's an important thing, to stay hydrated. So that is something that we're going to allow, but we're not allowing, we're not proposing that we allow food on the pool deck at this time. The guest policy. So this is a purely local policy. There is no state order that has anything to say about whether or not guests are allowed at the Pleasant Ridge Pool. It's entirely up to us. We do believe that adjustment is needed for 2021 because of the capacity limits. When we're operating at half capacity, there's obviously more scarcity for getting into the pool. And is it right or appropriate for us to allow guests in when that might be taking space away from a resident who wants to use the pool? We don't have a past basis of experience to know what the demand for guests would be or how that would, how that would impact pool operations. We will certainly learn more about pool usage patterns as the season progresses. Capacity limits may increase, freeing up space for guests like we have in the past. So obviously, any policy is subject to adjustment based on changing conditions and our experience. So some options, things I think have been talked about are to allow no guests. We could potentially say no guests until the Fourth of July, at which time we'll have some data on what the operating patterns are. You know, how the pool is being used. If, you know, if we have room to allow guests on weekends, maybe not, but maybe we have room to allow guests during weekday slots. So, you know, if a grandparent wants to bring their grandchildren to the pool, maybe, you know, weekdays at 1:00 or 3:30 is the time we can accommodate that. We don't know, but we'll get that data and we'll see those usage patterns soon. We could also allow limited guests. We could restrict the number of guest slots available in each time slot. We could allow guests on certain days and times, but not during others. And again, all of this is, is guesswork because we don't have experience. We don't have the data from running a pool the way we have to run the pool this year. So, oh, I'm sorry, got ahead of myself a little bit there. Also, there's been some talk of caregivers, so can, can nannies take resident children to the pool? Or can resident grandparents take their grandkids to the pool or, you know, vice versa? You know, there's a lot of questions about this. How many do you allow per household? Somebody has nine grandkids, can they bring them all? You know, if they have, if a grandparent lives in Pleasant Ridge and has nine grandkids who don't live in Pleasant Ridge, do they get to bring them all? Or do we say, nope, you have to pick your two favorite grandkids and you can only bring them? You know, I, I don't know. There's a lot of tough choices really with these policies, once you get into the details of how you're going to do it. And then, you know, if you allow nannies, is there a cost? You have to buy a pass, is a caregiver pass to be able to take kids to the pool? So I don't know. It gets, it gets complicated and it gets difficult the more of the specific and kind of, you know, detailed and Byzantine rules we adopt, it gets harder for staff to administer those and enforce them. Particularly when we are, when we have an assistant rec director who hasn't gone through a pool season with us here, so get ready for that, Greg. But also, most of our pool staff is going to be brand new this year. We don't have very many returning lifeguards. So there's going to be a lot of challenge with, you know, getting this going and running it smoothly. We do have concern about adopting too fussy of guest rules and being able to deal with those on top of everything else. So I guess let me just finish and then we can talk about everything. The last thing is pavilion rental. Do we allow it for rent in 2021 or not? I think staff, our, our, our hope was that we could rent the pavilion for gatherings during a normal pool season. And we think it addresses a couple of issues that we run into. Sometimes people will show up and try to turf the tables if they're having an event or a gathering at the pool, you know, putting bags on all the different tables to try to claim them for the event that starts 12:30 and they get there at 11:30 or noon. And then everyone else is mad that, you know, there's conflict over who, who gets to use that table. Allowing the pavilion to be rented in the future will, you know, provide certainty to everybody. You know, we'll be able to notify that, yeah, there's, you know, this pavilion is rented for these couple hours. If you're having the event, you don't have to get there and turf out the tables. Then presumably, there's less competition for those tables. So we think there's value in renting the pavilion out in future years. Maybe not this year. If we're not allowing food at the pool or not allowing guests, what would you rent the pavilion for? You know, it's, it's a question. So that's the last discussion point we'd have for the commission to look at. Yes, we know that we would like ability for staff to administratively adjust pool policies with prior notice to the city commission. I think things like guest policy would be something that we'd want the commission to weigh in on after we recommend something. But, you know, if, if capacity limits go up, if we, you know, find that there may be, it may be feasible to adjust our in-between time to 15 minutes. I think that's something that staff would like to be able to do without, you know, having to convene a meeting at the city commission. So we would like some flexibility there with obviously your consent and agreement. So these are the things, again, that are fixed by external order. There's really nothing for the commission to do on these items. What the commission can decide and discuss, and please provide us with guidance on. Time block length, we talked about that. Food, the default is no food allowed. Do we allow some flexibility for residents to bring their own food? Toddler food only if they've got little ones? You know, I don't know. Maybe that's something we can do. What kind of guest policy would you like to go with? I think we would recommend staff, no guests until the 4th of July, at which time we can look at the data, look at the usage patterns, and then reassess, you know, where and when and if we can allow guests in the pool in a way that is fair and fits with the usage patterns we've seen. But again, anything that you want to go with on that will implement. And then pavilion rental, yes or no? What do you think on that? And here's your motion, move to adopt the 21 supplemental pool rules as presented to allow staff to administratively adjust the rules with prior notice to city commission with the following amendments to the rules as presented. You'll have to decide and describe your guest policy. The only other thing that's in the draft rules that, that is questionable is the pavilion rental, yes or no? Then any other adjustments to any other policy. If you stay silent on food, no food will be allowed. If you don't include anything about
The time blocks.
in your motion, then the two-hour time blocks with the 30-minute in-between time, as we discussed, will go into effect. So really, it's just the things that you want to specifically change or set the policy. And again, really, that's guest policy is the major one. And then pavilion rental and then anything else would be changes that you wanted to see from the default. So I know, I know that was a lot, probably a lot of discussions and questions. So
I have a question. Okay, for example, if we wanted to explore like the whole toddler, like snacks for toddlers, is that a big deal? Like is, how would we, would that be a lot of work on the staff as far as like following protocols? Or is it, could it be an exception and fly to the, I mean, what do you think?
I don't know. Shawnee, do you have any thoughts on, you know, allowing puffs for one-year-olds or anything like that? I don't know.
Jim, I I know they're supposed to be like facing issues and stuff. So we are going to, in that 30-minute gap, we will space the chairs out to our, what is comfortable for us as the staff to be socially distanced. So we will stage everything to be socially distanced for six feet apart. So I wouldn't, I don't see a problem with that. I know initially, like when they shut down movies and you couldn't have concession stands because they didn't want you to take off your masks. Now having to be outside, you can be outside with no face masks on, you know, with up to 100 people. There's plenty of space out there. If you wanted to have a snack at your chair, we just rearranged six tables. We just put another six or seven round tables out. So I think if people safely can do that and clean up after themselves and safely do that within their own group of people, I, I don't see that being a problem.
Okay.
I like to have a snack myself on the pool deck. I get it, you know, when you're swimming and exercising, you know, somebody may want to have a granola bar after they've jammed for an hour, you know?
Yeah, I was going to say, well, that, that
Right, yeah. So it's not like bringing a hot righties in, you know, having pizzas delivered to the pool deck. It'd be like
Shawnee Oakenrill is offering a five-course that I was going to try and do at the pool. I don't know if that's possible or not, but
Yeah, it would be like pre-packed snacks, like in your own bag that you're bringing with you.
Well, okay, I mean, if you're opening
I'll take mine to go here too. Please. Thank you.
If you're, if you're opening it up, if you're opening it up to that, I would, I would be against saying toddlers can have a snack, but nobody else can have a snack because that opens up a whole other thing. Who's a toddler and what kind of snacks? But if, if you think it's okay, we could institute that. But then if people are not following the rules, we get rid of it.
Right, that's exactly
This will be up to the residents to police themselves if they're not cleaning up. If they're going beyond just basic little snacks like granola bars and things.
Right.
Then we should
For people that, you know, stay hydrated and healthy while they're at the pool. You know, we have tons of people that swim, you know, 5,000 yards during their hour and they jump out and they grab a granola bar or string cheese on their way to the locker room or on their way out. We, we don't have a problem with that. But, you know, getting a bunch of pizzas delivered and, you know, making a whole day out of it there. The whole premise is to, you know, in being cool a couple hours. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Shawnee. I appreciate you addressing it.
If, if that works No, go ahead.
I think we might also be just let people to know, to take their trash with them rather than to have trash cans there. And that might limit the size of the snack that they bring with them. Just carry it all out with you. And then there's less to manage during that 30-minute cleanup.
Yeah. And we'll have, you know, garbage cans on the way out and we'll, we'll plan for that for sure. But, you know, some boxes and stuff, yeah, it would get, it, it did get to be a lot. And we were having to hunt down recycling bins and pizza sauce stains on, you know, lots of the equipment and things like that. So snacks should be fully manageable.
Can I, can I ask a quick question? Ken?
Because we do, we do have quite the list of so many things in the 30-minute time block.
My question was, are people, are we allowing people to eat on the patio behind the rec center? Such that if you wanted to eat a pizza, you can go over to the rec center and go to the patio and have your pizza?
The park space and there's a couple picnic tables.
If you have to eat in the, in that two and a half hour block or so, then, okay. Yeah. Can, can I throw in? I'll just make one comment and then I'll stop and let everybody else. For me, my, my request would be no guests before the July 4th, before we can do an assessment. No pavilion for 2021, no rentals. Yeah. What else is there, right? We forgot food is taken care of. We don't have guests till the, till July 4th, and we don't have a pavilion rental for the entire summer. That would be my preference.
I agree with you. I agree with you.
What's the fourth thing? What was the fourth bullet point?
I don't think I had a fourth.
Okay, there are just three. Okay. So it's guests, the pavilion and food are the
Right.
Oh, I think it was just time slots, which we
Yeah, which, which we seem to be comfortable with.
Okay. So Kurt, again, what was your, what, what did you?
Well, I just, I, I, I agreed with Jim that we just have no guests, no nannies, no grandchildren, et cetera, until we look at, until we get to the July 4th assessment. When we're doing an assessment of, of hours and capacity and all these other things, we're, we're looking at the, the broad running of the pool and all the, all the aspects of the pool. And we re, we reevaluate at that time. Also, we won't know if there are capacity changes at the state and local level, whatever. And then I said, there's no reason to think about renting the pavilion if we're limiting food and we're limiting guests. What's, what are you going to do over at the pavilion? Rent the pavilion just to sit there with a few people that from Pleasant Ridge? I don't think that's quite going to do it. So, so I'm just saying there's
As valuable as we are.
Right. Well, of course, you still get to do that just by the pool. So
I'm getting bad, okay. I was getting bad feedback. So I don't understand. Like, what is the food policy that you're?
That was Shawnee was talking about.
I know. I was getting bad feedback. I don't know where
Just snacks, just letting snacks and just letting people eat like a granola bar or snacks.
Snacks for everyone.
Puffs, puffs and granola bars. And, you know, lots, and pick up, pick up all your little fish, you know, your, your cheese fish or whatever they're called.
Yeah. Clean up after yourself.
Goldfish, that's it. Sorry. Clean up after yourself. Yeah.
And just to add to your comment, Kurt, on the pavilion, if you think about it, there's no way a person will know up until a week before that they actually have a slot. So there's no booking the pavilion in August if you only can wait until a week before or actually
And you can't bring gas.
And you can't bring gas. And so since, since they're tied together, it just doesn't make sense to charge for the pavilion. It might make sense to make it available if someone wants to reserve it. When they reserve their week, they win a week in advance. Sure, why not? But to charge for that just doesn't make any sense this year to me.
So my question is, if, and it, if the state and county open up capacity more than 50%, like in early June, would that be something we'd want to reconsider? I mean, will we be nimble enough with that that we can reconsider that at that point? Capacity, stop.
I think, I think Shawnee said, yeah, we could.
Okay, great. Okay.
A lot of it's going to depend on, you know, exact timing.
Right.
If the state increases capacity on June 7, then we will, you know, obviously be able to discuss that at the commission meeting on June 8. Things like guests, you know, that's a major policy. Capacity is easy. If it's 75% capacity or, you know, if it goes to 100% capacity, I think once we're back to 100% capacity, we throw out the supplemental rules and we just operate like normal. 75% capacity, then we adjust. You know, we increase the number of time slots or the number of spaces that are available in each time slot. And we continue on that path until we gain the experience. If the state does this on June 9, then, you know, staff will have to take a look at it and go to the city commission and figure out, do you guys want to have a special meeting to consider, you know, guest policy instead of having, there's a lot of moving parts. So, you know, we know that we're going to have to just react to what happens, you know, the external, the external things will act accordingly internally.
Okay, great.
A quick question for Jim or Shawnee. Is our lifeguard count dependent on the number of people we get in? Or is that like the, is, we will need the number we have regardless of whether it's 50% or 100%?
You need the number you have regardless of the number of people that are in there.
Got it. Cool. So that's not a factor in increasing?
No.
Good. The, the last question I had was, and you may have said this, I, I may not have heard it. The ability for people to walk in and reserve is, is there or not there? Meaning, we really need everyone to go online and, or call to book a time slot. And they might do that 10 minutes before. But can they do that and walk up? Is this just a risk that it's full?
I think we'd prefer that they call.
Okay.
Even if it's from the park, just, just so that way there's not cross, people crossing paths. Yep.
And then I, a programming question. Are, is there going to be that early morning swim? I kept hearing about that, getting questions about that.
At this time, Anne, we're still waiting on staff scheduling. So a lot's still kind of riding on that. Sure. Because we have to have two people on staff for that in the morning. We have to have a headguard and a lifeguard. So we're just waiting to make sure that that's something we can get covered before we obligate ourselves to that. Thanks.
Are there other comments that, Ally, did I see you have your hand up? No?
Everything's pretty much been Lee Budnick, 130 Elm Park. And I love, love the pool. So I'm very glad to see that everything. And my two little girls are really excited to swim all summer. So, you know, I just, I guess since I'm talking, I'll bring up a couple of things I thought. Nannies go, I would just hope, I know that it's a kind of a really gray area with guests and everything. But I think you're taking away a lot of kids' abilities to swim if their caregivers can't bring them to the pool. And I know last year was that the pool wasn't opened at all. So all of these kids who now know the pool is going to open, you know, to have to look at their parents and say they can't go because their parents work. So I would hope that when the commission is voting on that, you would consider that for those kids. You know, we have different households in the city. So I would just hope we would consider that. And then a question with the lifeguards on the pool deck at a time, because we're at a lowered capacity. I know when I worked at the pool, you know, we always had four lifeguards on duty and a headguard. And there was always a fourth, the fourth lifeguard was, you know, tasked with cleaning the bathrooms and picking up trash, moving chairs around during their 15 minutes where they were down or not in the sun at that time. Are we running with two lifeguards down? Or do we not have to have the third lifeguard, you know, kind of meandering around the zero depth area? You know, I've never worked for Shawnee at the pool, but I did work there for quite a long time. So I'm just wondering if there's any, you know, leeway with guard coverage? Or will we see, you know, more people on the deck able to do those, those activities that should be done in that half hour?
Yeah. No, that's a good point. So we'll have three guards on pool deck at a time in that fourth one down. And hopefully, we'll be able to get some of that stuff done in that time. We're, we're just going to give that buffer just in case. That 30-minute buffer, just to make sure that everything can be reset, you know, as taking all those chemical readings and stuff. We just want to make sure that we have enough time to make sure that we're not having to pull the headguard away from, as you know, yes, pulling the headguard away from registration and desk check-in. Because that seems like it's going to be the biggest thing, that people want to make sure that everybody is checking in with a key fob. So we want to make sure that that headguard is back in that amount of a lot of time.
Past, in regards to what Brett was saying about letting people kind of come in and check in or see if they could swim at that time. Just from past, what I remember happening, that's kind of when the people would try and sneak in that weren't necessarily residents that knew how great the pool was. So I definitely agree with the having to call ahead of time to make sure that people, you know, if it's only 66 people on the pool deck, I want to make sure that they're residents and they are you know, if it's only 66 people on the pool deck, I want to make sure that they're residents and they are, um, in there with the rest of us.
And, and what helps with that this time is that every person swimming will have a key fob. So it would be really hard for someone to just walk up and grab a key fob and get into the pool. They would have had to to do something beforehand to get, to get that far.
Yep. And even like, say, if they call from the parking lot, because they'll be able to tell, like, if they're looking at the software from like their smartphone, they'll be able to see, you know, 66, there's 66 opening, 40 people are in the pool. So they'll know that there's 26 openings. So they'll know that they'll be able to get in. But just knowing that they can call, you know, call from the parking lot, but they won't be able to physically register themselves after that 10 minute window. We'll just be able to call and manually put them in, you know, while they're getting out of their car and getting their stuff on. So it'll just be a nice smooth transition to making sure that with somebody at the desk getting them in, getting them logged in. So that way, when they walk in, they'll be recorded in the system as well as fobbed in.
Are there any other comments?
Yeah, Mayor.
Yes.
Real quick, just to touch on, on the few things we talked about, I, regarding the guest thing, yeah, it, it's, I, I feel for those in, in the situation where they, they might have trouble, but I, if, if it's, you know, if they have a caregiver during the day, I, I would hope that someone could take them out for a night swim, something like that. And, and I do feel for, for those. Cause I know, Mayor, you have grandkids. I'm sure you'd love to bring them. So I know that's a hard decision for you. So I.
I already told them, I already told them no swimming this year. So.
It, it's crazy. I heard you're going to have to put in an in-ground pool. That's what I heard.
Yeah, right.
But, uh.
They'll have to do that.
No doubt. Yeah. My, my two cents around that is, yeah, I think we should give, give some time to let it suss out and see what, what it looks like before we, before we allow guests. That, that's just what I've heard from most, most people that have talked to me is, is, so I agree with the, the no guests to start and then reevaluate it and see where we are. Uh, the pavilion thing, I, I align with that. My, my only question around the pavilion was, can we still rent it? Let's say, as I believe Commissioner Perry was stating, if, let's say the rules change, capacity changes, things get better, God willing. Would we entertain being able to reserve that for a party? Maybe not rent it, but reserve it. So that, that is a question around that. Um, and I think that was it.
Mr. Mayor, Marcia Ruff has her.
Oh, Ty, Marcia.
Hi, yeah. Uh, so Marcia Ruff at 130 Maplefield. Um, I actually wanted to second what Ally was saying about finding some way to let caregivers and nannies take children. I mean, whether you could register them by name or something, but it doesn't seem fair to a resident who, if the mother or father could have taken the child during the day, but they can't because they're working, that they have a caregiver not able to do that. I mean, that seems to be very different from just a guest situation. Um, so I, I think as a resident, I would be, I would, I would be upset if I couldn't have my caregiver do exactly what I would have done if I could have been home. So I was going to say that before Ally did, and I just wanted to second her.
Um, Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, my concern with this, you know, it's like the whole, the caregiver thing, I totally understand. But then I also understand a lot of grandparents are doing, you know, are watching their grandchildren and things like that. So we get into this weird situation of like, uh, what, you know, who are guests and who are, you know, what are caregiving situations? And, you know, you want to be, uh, you know, so it just gets very, like, like what we're saying is how it gets so complicated. And, um, as we're trying to register, you know, people, I mean, a lot of people still haven't registered and gone in and gotten their pool passes yet and things like that. So there's going to be a long, this is, uh, there, there are a lot of people still to, um, to get processed with the pool. And so it's like the, the guest polit, the policy, I think it's, it's a tough one. I don't, it's, it's a really tough one.
Excuse me, can I, can I do a follow-up?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, okay. Well, then I guess I'm unclear on what we're thinking about in terms of guests. If the child is a Pleasant Ridge resident and the caregiver is perhaps not, but that's the, the in loco parentis person, that's, are you talking about grandparents bringing in non-resident children? Um, that, because they're caregivers, because I'm really talking about just when the family is Pleasant Ridge residents, the children are Pleasant Ridge residents, then, um, I don't see that that ends up being a guest situation. But a grandparent couldn't bring non-resident children in if we don't have other guests.
But if the grandparent is sort of a caregiver to those children and the grandparent is a resident of Pleasant Ridge.
But the children are not. I guess, I mean, that's how I'm defining it. The children are not from, if their children are not Pleasant Ridge residents, then they would be guests and then they wouldn't be allowed. I'm just thinking of Pleasant, I'm defining it as just Pleasant Ridge families, the parents, the children who live in Pleasant Ridge. And then there's a caregiver taking the child.
Where I would have an issue with that is just that, um, so then we're just sort of servicing one air, you know, privileging one air, uh, uh, demographic. And, you know, so the grandparents who like have, have these grandchildren, like, don't get that same benefit of being able to bring in, you know, of sort of being the reverse situation. You know, because they're still residents here.
Right. But, but just like I can't bring my grandchildren in because they don't live in Pleasant Ridge. I mean, that's, that to me is they were always guests. And so I, I, I guess I don't, I don't see that as a problem. I mean, I'm a resident, I can bring my resident husband, but I wouldn't bring my non-resident grandchildren. Um, whereas if I were a resident with resident children, I would want them to go to the pool during the day if they.
Uh huh. And just for, just for clarification, and, and you're, and the way that you're thinking about it, is the caregiver a Pleasant Ridge resident as well?
In, uh, Ty me?
Yes, yeah, sorry.
No, no, I'm thinking the, the caregiver is in loco parentis. You know, I think, as, as I think Ally put it, you know, well, it's like some kid says, oh, I can't go to the pool because mom's working, but I could have gone to the pool if mom didn't work. And that seems a little harsh. So, um, so I'm really thinking just within a total resident situation with a caregiver in loco parentis.
Yeah, I, I, I'm thinking, this is my thought. I'm thinking we'll know a lot more by July 4th than we know today. And we'll have a sense of how big or small of an issue it is. One way, uh, to sort of help that is that I, and Shawnee and, and Jim may correct me, but I think kids over age 13, 13 and older can go in without a, without supervision. So that group of kids is, is kind of.
Actually 11, it's 11 and.
11?
Yeah.
So we've, we've got kids 11 and older taken care of. And then all of the younger kids, it might be a good opportunity to, to go with some other neighbors because really if they need to be supervised, I suspect another neighbor could take them. And that might help for the time that they go into the pool because really the key is everyone that goes to the pool must have a pool tag. So, and that's our way of knowing that they're residents and, um, it's entirely possible for the kids to go with, uh, their, their neighbor's kids. And, uh, everybody gets to go. It's not a perfect solution, but at least it, it helps us understand, uh, what we were dealing with for the first, uh, for the first month or so.
Tom?
Yeah, um, Tom Wilkinson, again, 130 Maplefield. Yeah, I was going to suggest, um, maybe sort of sketching up a potential caregiver. Cause I do think there's a difference. And again, you know, like Kurt, we have grandchildren who don't, aren't Pleasant Ridge residents who we like to take to the pool. But I understand, you know, if, if we can't accommodate them and all of the residents, that's perfectly fair. Um, but to, to at least sort of sketch, see if we can sketch up a workable policy that can look at July 4th, because I would guess that probably capacity during the day on weekdays is not going to be the big issue for, for the pool. I'm just wildly speculating and that we might in fact be able to figure out how do we define a caregiver and, um, for, for resident children and maybe expand it early in July, if, if capacity is not a problem, or better yet, if the state and the county decide to further lift the capacity caps, that might be a, a compromise.
I'm for, I agree with you, Tom. I'm for, I'm for, this is my feeling. I'm for, let's see what happens until July 4th and prepare and think carefully about what a caregiver situation could look like.
I agree.
And we'll know a lot more about demand in general. So we might find that it's just not an issue because of how demand works out this year. So let's give ourselves the time to do that. That would be, would be my thought.
Okay. Jim, Jim, did I, you, oh, I'm sorry. I thought, go ahead. Sorry.
It's to how caregiver passes have worked in the past. You know, we've always had the 35 guest passes for, um, you know, like the babysitter or, uh, but really the families that seem to purchase the caregiver pass, which was a pass you could purchase in addition to your pool membership, um, were people who it was a nanny who was with their kids, you know, four or five. And, um, but the, these families knew that their caregiver would want to bring their younger than 11 years old children to the pool. So I just think, you know, I, it sounds like what it's going to be, um, but somebody wants to pay for it potentially. Um, you know, I know that gets into some, people might be willing to pay a little more this summer, um, just in light of everything, um, and try and bend the rules, but I just know that's how it's worked in the past. And just from what I knew or what I saw was that, you know, the people that really consistently knew how they were going to use that pass, um, really made it and to pay for it too.
Um, Jim, I was just, were you altering the motion? Did I see you making notes or no? How do we, how do we make this motion specific enough?
Yeah, the slide that you had with the motion?
Yeah, I was making, uh, notes to myself, but.
Oh.
I can do this.
I didn't want to put the pressure on you, but.
Why not?
You need a detailed motion and I can't come up with anything right at the moment. Figured you had the outline. That's why we're paying in the big bucks.
And while Jim's finishing his game of Tetris, what was the, uh, I, I, my question regarding, it was, it touched on what Ann was saying about the pavilion. If, if and when hopefully guidance changes from governmental um, policy, are we able to reserve, not rent, but reserve that? Or is it first come, first served? How are we treating the pavilion? Or is it, it not usable? What, what was our decision around that?
Not rentable. We, we, didn't we say we're not going to rent it? We're just going to let it go and then evaluate, we can evaluate next summer.
What do you mean let it go?
Like not rent it. If somebody.
Yeah. So you can use it. So is it first come, first served? Is it?
That's my understanding. What do you, is, Jim, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah. So what I would, what I would request on this is, uh, you know, part of the rental fee for the pavilion is the administrative burden of, of managing, you know, a reservation there. I wouldn't want to allow people to reserve it and then have staff have the expectation of, you know, clearing people out of there and keeping it open for your reserved time without the fee that goes along with that. So I would say just leave it first come, first served.
Gotcha. Thank you.
That makes sense to me too.
Yep. The only other question I have is we're saying, you know, no guests until the 4th of July and we will reconsider, you know, a lot of these things and we'll have a lot more data and, and we'll know a lot more by then. What is the right, you know, kind of decision point then? If we wait until the July city commission meeting, that's another week after the Monday after the 4th of July. Um, you know, I, I, I don't know that staff is going to be comfortable saying, oh yeah, well, we're going to allow guests now on our, on our own volition, you know, on Tuesdays at 3 o'clock. Um, do we, do we want to wait until that regular July city commission meeting? Do we want to look at a, uh?
Special meeting?
Special meeting.
On Tuesday, the 6th, you know.
Special meeting, yeah. I would go for a special meeting as well.
Yeah.
Great.
Some of us may not be present in Pleasant Ridge.
Fortunately, the state of disaster, although you can zoom in from wherever you may be, Brett.
There you go.
You just have to tell us where you are. That's all.
You're right.
7:30.
Done.
Great.
Okay, okay. Does this look amenable?
Is it, is it, you're steering.
I can't see it.
I can't see it.
Looks great.
Sure, I, I'd vote for that. What is it? Where'd it go? Ah. Can you see it now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
May I try?
Please. May we have a motion? May we have a motion?
Sure. I move to adopt the 2021 supplemental pool rules as presented to allow staff and to administratively adjust the rules with prior notice to the city commission and with the following amendments to the rules as presented. Guest policy is no guests until after the 4th of July. The pool rental is not considered at this time. Food, um, prepackaged food is allowed. Residents expected to clean up after themselves. And staff will bring recommended poli, policies adjustments to the city commission at a special meeting to be held on July 6th at 7:30.
Is there support?
Support.
Any, any further discussion before we go to a vote? All right, Amy, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Budnick.
Yes.
Commissioner Perry.
Yes.
Commissioner Wall.
Yes.
Mayor Metzger.
Yes, motion carries. Well done. Okay.
Wow.
Next item is city manager's report. There you go. What else you got for us, Jim?
Oh, the other thing I'd like to mention is that we are going to be doing a, a small Memorial Day ceremony this year. Um, at, I believe 9 a.m. Uh, in Memorial Park, uh, at the memorial rock by the fountain. Um, we will not have some of the things we had in the past, food and drink, or the middle school band, uh, but Cannon will be there and, uh, we will, uh, we will honor our, uh, our veterans, uh, that perish since August. So 9 a.m., we hope to see you there. We hope for good weather.
And the cannon will be there.
And the cannon.
Right, okay. Excellent. Cannon don't care about COVID. Any, anything else? No?
No.
That, that's it? Okay. Thank you, sir. Um, any other business? I'm sure Amy has something for us.
I do.
Go ahead.
Uh, so nominating petitions are available for, uh, the mayoral seat and two city commission seats. We have one mayor petition that's out circulating and one city commission petition that was recently turned in. Um, those are available until Ju, uh, July 20th. They're due July 20th at 4 p.m. in the office here. Uh, it takes 25 signatures to get on the ballot. So if you're interested, give a call to city hall. One of us could answer your questions or come pick up a petition. We're here Monday through Thursday, 9 to 4, right?
Excellent. Any other comments? Anything to add? No? Nothing? Any good books you've read? Good books you've read lately or any? Oh, okay. With that, I'm going to ask, is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks to you guys. Thanks a lot, Shawnee.
Thank you, Shawnee.
Thank you, Shawnee. Thank you, Greg.
Thanks, Greg.
Bye, John boy.
You too, Jim.
Good night, Amanda.